Turn the mics on, please. Turn your mics on, please.
Turn them on or turn off?
On. Want to call the meeting of the zoning board for Frazier, June 5th to order, please. If you all join me for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Cindy, roll call, please.
Board member Burley.
Present.
Board member Tmeti.
Present.
Chair Farina.
Present.
Board member Wall.
Present.
Board member Menendez.
Present.
Board member Stasek.
Present.
And board member Green.
Present.
We have a quorum?
Yes, sir.
Okay, approval of the agenda for June 5th, 2025. Is there a motion or any changes that we see?
I'll make a motion as presented.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion. Agenda is approved. Approval of minutes of March 6th. Any changes to the minutes of March 6th? By the way, just to make sure, if you do have any changes, call it into the city clerk before the meeting so that they can make them. And that helps out going forward. All right, having heard that there are no, I'll make the motion to accept the minutes, March 6th, 2025.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approved. We are going to forego the formal statement by the chair because we have no business tonight. And I don't think that the one person in attendance, okay. No business, postponed cases, we have none. New business of the board is a presentation of the new zoning ordinance update. Madam Plammer, could you please help us out here?
Thank you, Chair Farina. Yeah, so tonight, we just wanted to kind of give a high-level overview of what's been done with the zoning ordinance. And then, you know, I pulled out a couple items that the zoning board of appeals has kind of presided over those cases in the past, you know, couple years to kind of look at those sections and to kind of have a discussion about, you know, what the zoning board thinks and if, you know, there's any changes that you think would be appropriate or things we should add, take out, things like that. So, yeah, I'll keep the presentation pretty brief. So this is, I don't know if anyone can read that, it's maybe a little hard on the screen, but it's kind of an overview of the timeline. So the project kicked off July 2024. In August, we did a diagnostic report, which is kind of looking through the ordinance and calling out sections that we think would be changing. And then we used that later as kind of the initial step to making those changes. And we also had the steering committee kickoff. Through October to December, we had some online survey and in-person engagement events. We've been working on the first draft from September to this March. In January, we had another steering committee meeting. Staff has been reviewing it through April. And then, May through June, we're about to have our third steering committee meeting, which will review the full draft. As then, we'll present that to planning commission with the second draft. And then, from there, we'll have another steering committee meeting in September. And then hopefully, at that point, we've got a draft that's ready for planning commission, public hearing, and recommendation. And then hopefully, council have their first and second reading in November through January with a potential adoption in January of the new ordinance. Should be 2026 up there, my bad. So, some major things that have changed, removal of a couple districts. Yep.
This is being funded by a grant, by the way.
Correct, yeah. So it's mostly funded by a grant. The city provided an additional 35 grand on top of the 50 grand that was grant-funded. So we did receive money through MISTDA, Michigan State Housing Development Authority. And they've, I think that grant source is actually out now. So we did, we're able to capitalize on that opportunity. So, yeah, so we removed districts. The REC, there was only one parcel, partial parcel, and it included the golf course. The OS district only included four, and they were all adjacent to the CN, so they kind of got absorbed into that district. And then the OR, similarly, only one parcel, and it was adjacent to IR, so that got absorbed into that. A new district, we've got a new district, Transitional Residential. This was identified in the future land use plan, and it's intended to serve as sort of a buffer between commercial and residential uses and kind of around the central business district as well. So here's the draft zoning map, which deviates a little bit from the future land use map, mainly just because of the conditional rezoning at the bank site. So that the central business district is kind of cut off at Utica now and focusing more around the Garfield 14-mile intersection. You can see the lighter orange is that residential transition as well. And then, just in terms of naming, you know, instead of IR and IC, we changed it to Light Industrial LI and General Industrial GI. So they still function very much the same, but it's just a little more clear what those districts are supposed to, the uses they're supposed to serve. So, moving into the discussion, you know, one of the items that we had here at the zoning board was on the exterior facade materials. So we have this table, it's in your practice as well, but it's essentially, breaks it down by zoning district, which materials can be primary and which materials can be secondary. Primary materials will comprise a minimum of 75% of the first four facade and 50% of the second floor. And the secondary will only comprise a maximum of 25% of the first floor and 50 of the second and any subsequent floors. And so having this would allow for applicants to not have to come before, you know, planning commission or zoning board. It allows for more flexibility than just brick, but also allows the city to kind of, you know, dictate what that's going to look like still. Not just say, you can do whatever you want, but just have, you know, set allowances per district. So we've got masonry, which is allowed across the board. That's, you know, the stone, the brick, allowed as both primary and secondary. We've got concrete, both cast-in-place and precast, which is allowed in every district except for the residential. And again, noting the residential districts are just for non-residential buildings. So we're not regulating what people are using for their homes. Concrete masonry units, so those are kind of the, like, the blocks. Siding, either wood or fiber cement board. Stucco, so I know we've had a lot of come before planning commission rather than zoning, but planning commission that had kind of EPIS, which is a type of stucco, and it's definitely come a long way since, you know, stucco was originally introduced. And then architectural metal panel, which is, we have allowed in the industrial and then as an accent or secondary in the general commercial. I guess, any initial thoughts on this?
Lauren, is this going to be open-ended so that we can add new materials to it? As the industry changes, that's one of the reasons they were coming with stucco to the planning commission was that that was newer back when it was introduced, but it's common in the industry now.
Yeah, so the ordinance is...
It says composites, would that cover that?
I wouldn't say there's anything in here that's like a catch-all for anything. I would say that as the industry changes, you would do an ordinance amendment. And, you know, the ordinance is meant to be kind of a living document that evolves with time. Obviously, we haven't done a massive overhaul of our ordinance, that's why we're doing one now. But, you know, the zoning ordinance definitely should be amended regularly. I know that's not what anyone wants to hear, but it's, it is a good practice for it to be amended regularly.
Okay. Does anybody have any comments on this?
Does anyone have any objections to say, you know, concrete, having concrete as a primary in the downtown, like CBD or CN? Is that...
Are you referring to a decorative concrete or, like, you know what I mean, not standard block wall?
The block would be the concrete masonry units. And that would be allowed in the general commercial as the primary, and the industrial districts, and then a secondary. So as, like, an accent in the commercial neighborhood in CBD.
Well, under concrete, you have there is, it's a primary cast-in-place concrete. Do you have an example of that that we can look at?
Well, that could be like a basement. It's casted.
No, I'm thinking this is all above ground that she's talking about.
Correct, but it's formed, I think, is what you're saying.
Okay, with...
I can search one.
I'm assuming that's what it means, is cast-in-place, is, you know, that it's actually a formed structure.
It kind of...
Have, like, texture on, like, that rock at the bottom there?
I would assume that's actually probably cast-in-place and not masonry. Like, most, most commercial properties and developers aren't paying for, like, a fieldstone foundation, I don't think. So, yeah, so, yeah, the cast-in-place would be that, you're correct, would be like those forms and the casting and that. And then the precast is, they've already had it cast somewhere and they're putting it up.
The panels.
I don't have a problem with it.
Okay, well, as everyone's... The next one is lighting. So we've had variance on lighting, and lighting's been a topic in planning and zoning. And so I have here the table, which has maximum illumination. So I know we've kind, we kind of, when the Mr. Car Wash case came, we had a discussion about, you know, if it was an error in there, about it being a maximum, if it was supposed to be average, things like that. So, you know, we've got an overall site average of five-foot candles at any given point. Except gas stations' drive-throughs, a maximum of 10. At any point along the property line, half of a foot candle. And a gas canopy, maximum 20, and then drive-throughs, 15. We did keep the provision that if it's adjacent to a, you know, residential district or use, that the, at the property line, it should only, it can't exceed a quarter or one-fourth, and that's in the current ordinance.
If I may, this one, the guy from the car wash came to us and said, I measured the lighting for, like, for city hall here. And he measured directly under the light. Now, it's obviously going to be brighter directly under the light than if you go five foot to this side, five foot to that side. Are we going to tell them how it's to be measured?
Yeah, I think that that would be, you know, a good thing to add, for sure. I don't think that's in here currently, but I do think that would be good to add. I think the current ordinance does specify where it's to be measured, so...
I didn't see it when I read that.
On that, where it says any point within the site, except for gas stations' drive-throughs, 10. For the car wash, it wouldn't approve. Because he had some lights that were more than 10.
Yeah.
Is that what is a good candle amount, foot candle amount, a maximum? Because unless it's a gas sta, as I read this, unless it's a gas station, a drive-through, or a pump, you know, at a gas station, you can only have a light that has five candlelight, foot candles.
Well, the average, so you could have areas that are 10, but if it has to average out to five over the whole site.
Right, right, but what I'm saying is no light can be over five or 10 foot candles.
Right.
But the new car wash that they're going to put in, it's 20-foot candles.
Correct.
At the vacuums where people are doing work.
So that doesn't even...
So that doesn't cover that.
Approve for that.
So, yeah, so there's, I guess, two ways. You could either increase the overall to be higher, or you could, you know, stipulate for, you know, car washes or type of things. I mean, you could, they could, I suppose, you know, argue that it is kind of a drive-through use because you're doing the car wash, but then, you know, they're driving through the car wash. You could also more specifically stipulate, you know...
But this is where they were vacuuming out the cars.
Right, sure.
That was my comment too, about you have pump canopy areas, what about the vacuum areas?
Yeah, I guess, um...
Adding it maybe to the, the line item of pump canopy areas of gas stations and...
I mean, what would be wrong with just changing the maximum level to 20? As long as it, on the whole, outside is not reflecting out. What is bad about having more light if it's not reflecting out? If your light candles on the overall site or on the, any point along the property line are still at those minimums, why can't you have a 20 candlelight one?
Yeah, I think the biggest reason people, or, you know, ordinances don't is because, you know, people driving, maybe it's distracting to have, you know, bright lights one spot while they're driving. That's probably, you know, the only thing, I understand the... Like, I understand what you're saying, that, you know, why does it matter as long as it's not trespassing, so...
Yeah, as long as it's not protruding out the light out there, it shouldn't affect even people driving, that's what I would assume. If the light isn't coming out.
Yeah, yeah, and, you know, again, from, I guess, from a planning standpoint, you know, if that's the direction that, you know, you think we should take, I don't think I have any objection to that. I don't think that's an issue.
City council voted for it to be 20-foot candles at the gas pumps. Why are we even dealing with it then? I mean, they've changed the ordinance.
So, yeah, city council made a motion for planning commission to initiate a zoning ordinance text amendment with that 20-foot candles. I talked to Don about that in terms of, you know, what if city, what if they want to go higher, what if they want to go lower? And he said, you know, they motioned for it to start with there, so... Also, this is looking at kind of broadly, more broadly, the lighting ordinance. And, you know, what board member Burley said isn't about the fuel pump canopies either. But, you know, that's something that I guess we'll kind of address more in planning commission on that exact directive. But, I mean, again, tonight is a discussion, so it's, there's no motions or anything. It's just a discussion on kind of how this board, especially having gone through some of these variance requests on these items, how this board feels about, you know, some of this draft text language.
I got a question. Has anybody actually measured some of the things in Frazier and then drive at night?
Oh, yeah.
And say, this is probably adequate, this is not adequate, this is what we should do, this is what we shouldn't do?
Well, that's what I'm looking for. Here's some light study.
Yeah, that's the one for the car wash. What I'm saying is, the Meyer parking lot, if you go underneath the light, you know, or the gas station there, what is it? When you drive by, is it adequate light? Does it, you know, is it bad on your eyes by driving? Is there any idea of things like that? So you can get kind of a baseline of, you know, 20 is probably good. Too high, not too low.
I don't personally have those CIA measurements, so I haven't...
No, you do.
I'm just asking if somebody's ever done that.
You do, you do.
The car wash presented them.
You do have that because you gave it to us on what other cities are doing.
I have what other cities are doing. I don't have actual measurements from Frazier, from other places.
And I'm looking for that.
Do we have a device to do it?
Oh, yeah.
Pardon?
Yes.
Well, we already have numbers at ground level, the ones that the car wash did. And if I'm not mistaken, didn't Sheets run some numbers as well?
Yeah, but that's not...
It did, but it's just for gas station canopies, it wasn't, you know, the broader, different nighttime.
Around the entire, around the entire property?
Or other businesses that aren't gas stations. So I, I personally don't have those, you know, a lot of this was reliant on, you know, other communities and kind of pulling from what they've been doing, but...
Also, I would take what Car Wash said with a grain of salt, like, some of those measurements seem pretty extreme. And he could have, you know, had the device, like, immediately next to the light, you know, you would...
Well, he did it that way originally, and then he did it, he redid them the night of the meeting, he said that's why he was...
At what level?
At the ground. So he had it in the right place.
I truly assume everyone's honest, but that's just me.
No. No builders on this. If you could give that to us again, please, for the comparisons for other areas, other communities around here. I know you gave it, I just looked through my stuff, I don't have it here. I don't think it came to zoning, I think it went to the planning commission.
Yes, there was a memo that had a compilation from the last, from the, when the Sheets requested their, their additional variance. And it had Sheets's numbers, it had the peer communities, and then Don also pulled some communities that weren't in his home.
And you did that as well for the car wash?
Yep.
We had numbers there too.
Yes.
Yep, yep, that was the same.
That's what I'm looking for.
Yeah, that's in the, well, let's see when we...
I think, I don't think, I think I brought it to the, I brought it to the meeting. I don't think it was...
But it would be in the packet for...
No, I don't think it was in the packet, I think I brought it.
No, but when you gave it, we probably would have filed it in there if you kept it.
Oh, oh, sure.
In that, on that day's meeting.
Anyway.
I can resend it after. Yep. So, I guess, does anyone kind of...
Well, I like the average because ours does not give an average. But I think it should be, there should be some direction as to where the measurement is taken because you can greatly influence a light study by where you take it. If you take it directly out of the light bulb like this, or you take it down here, or five feet away, you're going to come out with different readings.
Exactly what I'm saying too.
Yeah.
Okay. Yep.
Who's got this device that you said we have?
Building department.
Building department's got it?
I think, yeah, I think the bigger is, the issue is that, you know, everyone stops working at 4:30. You know, we don't have a nighttime enforcement, or we don't have people working, you know, in city hall after, so that's why it's not. But I know they're kind of playing around with, you know, weekend enforcement and trying to do that a little bit. So maybe that's something that they can look into, if they try a nighttime. But, you know, I understand, you know, foot candles isn't something that anyone, oh, yeah, this is what a foot candle looks like. It's kind of this abstract thing, so...
But I, I think that's a good question to ask, though.
Yes.
What the, you know, why not do a max of 20 as long as it doesn't affect anything around it? And see what, what the reason is why they don't want to go to that point, as long as your average is five and then the, around the, any port of the property line is, you know, half.
Yeah.
I mean, to me, it doesn't make sense if, as long as the average is five, what the magnitude is, as long as it's not, you know, a million.
Sure.
No, it'll still only be 20. The maximum, you would have a maximum of the 20-foot candle, so that would be the most. And as long as you didn't have every five feet, because it's going to affect the average of the site, it, I don't see why it would make a difference, but I don't know.
Well, that's what this is for, discussion, so...
Yeah, this, yeah, I appreciate that. I also pulled out some prohibited lighting. I know it was kind of a discussion where we were talking about signs in the planning commission about the string lighting. And you said, you know, this is more of a lighting issue than a sign issue. So we have prohibited lighting is visible rope lighting, or similar lighting around windows, doors, architectural accents or other building features. It does not apply to indirect lighting, it does not expose the light source. We also prohibit flashing, moving animated intermittent lighting, except for bulbs on marquees for when there's a downtown theater or something. String lighting, when used to cover an exterior facade or portion thereof. Laser source light or any similar high-intensity light for outdoor advertising or entertainment that projects above the horizontal plane of the fixture, and then search lights, also prohibited.
So all of these stores that have the lights around the perimeter now would have to remove them?
Yes.
Like Sal's, or I don't even know if they still have it, do they? They had it around their, the light, rope light around their windows.
Do we find that offensive? As I don't.
I don't either, and I, the more it evolves, I mean, we're going to have to change with times, I mean, you know, lights are lights.
So you want rope lighting? Well, is there a story behind why this is prohibited? It's mainly an aesthetic thing for people. Places usually ban it, just aesthetic, they don't like the aesthetics, you know, sometimes...
Doesn't look like Vegas.
Yeah, sometimes it's like, you know, aesthetics, sometimes people say there's, you know, associations, we don't want that type of business, that's, you know... So, like, does this apply to Christmas lights? Um, this is just before, so it, there's exceptions on the next page, and I believe...
Yeah, I think it says something about temporary lighting.
Yeah, I, where is it? Temporary uses, yeah.
Lighted for permitted temporary uses? Exceptions nine-two.
Yeah, there, I think maybe it's even in the sign ordinance, I'd have to look back, but there is something about how it's not. If there's not, you know, we should maybe more explicitly add, you know, holiday lighting. I know it gets tricky because then someone puts it up and they say, oh, this is for this holiday, and it's up all year round, and there's always a new next holiday, so... I'll, I'll talk to the attorneys about that because I know we've probably had way too long conversation about it, but...
You know, look at, look at in Rochester, where all of the stores are covered with lights, I mean...
Well, like, classic Coney Island, they have, like, lights up, and I don't, I don't think that that's, like, bad. Okay. Yeah, I feel like... Kind of like taking away an opportunity for people to have pride in, like, their business. I don't know. Yeah, I think, you know, I've, I feel like since I've started, I was getting a lot of notes on, you know, we don't want this rope lighting, that's why it's there. If that's kind of, it's shifting, if the direction's shifting, I'm cool taking that out, that's not an objection. Are there places in Frazier where there's rope lighting that is, like, yucky, or...
Well, no, but you could, you know, if, like Sal's, if they have one on each window all the way across, there are six windows. You know, that adds a lot of light, a lot of, you know, visual, so, I mean, the only thing is, if you do have visible rope, it's really going to have to be how much, what's the lighting, what, I mean, that's, that's a lot to, I think, to manage.
Well, that's what they do with the moving signs, they control the intensity of the light. They just couldn't have any brightness that they wanted because of the distraction to ongoing traffic.
I don't have any issues with that.
Can't hear you.
I don't have any issues with that. It sure is. Okay.
Good discussion.
All right, yep, and then landscaping and screening is kind of the last one. And so, you know, our current landscape ordinance doesn't have, doesn't have a lot of specificity when you get into it. And so, you know, our current landscape ordinance doesn't have, um, doesn't have a lot of specificity when you get into it. So what we did is added that and added kind of more specific requirements in terms of landscaping, in terms of like quantity and location. The first thing is, you know, general landscape requirements. So we're looking at, you know, maintenance of existing landscaping, preservation, existing vegetation, planting setbacks, mulch, irrigation, species variety, minimum planting size. You know, it's important to plant a tree that's going to survive. So you want to make sure it's a minimum size. And then prohibited species, we reference the MDNR list instead of having one that will constantly update. Installation requirements. And then when we get into required landscaping, we split it out by site landscaping. And that's, you know, the overall, for the overall site, it's a, it's a calculation. We have one deciduous or evergreen tree per 1,000 square feet of non-paved surface. And then street frontage landscaping, so there's a certain amount deciduous, ornamental and shrubbery required for frontages. And then parking lot landscaping, so requiring parking lot islands that are landscaped when this lot has 20 or more parking spaces. And then what each island must entail. Any kind of questions on, discussion on that part so far?
Yeah, I got a question. You know, an eight-foot tree, evergreen tree is a big tree. So you have, the minimum size is eight feet for an evergreen tree. That's, that's a big tree. Why does it have to be that big? I mean, that's, that's a $300 tree you're asking somebody to put in.
Let me look into that and then what the minimum for, I think.
Because even your, your, your ornamental trees and that, two inches, that's a pretty good sized tree too. That's probably 15 feet.
I believe.
Unless they're talking about, are they talking about the circumference?
So the diameter at, at breast height, DBH, is what usually that is.
Okay. Okay, okay, so, but still measures for the evergreen is still eight feet.
Eight feet, yeah, because they don't usually measure, they can't usually get into the evergreens.
Usually they, when they talk about trees, they talk about the thickness.
Right.
Diameter of it.
Yeah, every, yeah, again, evergreens, they.
So if that's the circumference.
For everything but the evergreen, yeah. So, yeah, I'll look into that. I think generally we're looking at like the nurseryman standards. I think they have just like an association. But I'll look into the eight feet and see if that's, um, you know, if that was, if that's the actual minimum or if there's, you know, lower than probably what's recommended, I guess. So I'll, I'll look into that.
And this would be for all new, right?
Yep, so if you're, if you're.
So if you're building new, this is what you'd have. And is this residential also?
No.
Okay.
Well, that's what I was going to ask. Where do we address residential? I didn't see it.
I don't think you'd.
As I know, when I moved into my house, I'm on a corner, so I had to have two trees in the front and one tree on the side. You know, it was a requirement.
For ordinance? For the zoning ordinance?
Well, when I moved in, that's what they told me I had to have. Said he made me plant them.
Yeah, when I built my house, I had to have two in the front.
Me too.
It's between the sidewalk and the street.
Usually the landscaping ordinances are for just commercial or industrial things that are site plan approved. Let me look, let me look into that.
And then the question comes up, if it's a requirement for somebody to have that, what happens when it dies? Is code enforcement going to be able to enforce them, tell them they have to replace it?
I'm not certain that I think we should make residential have trees.
Okay. And why did I have to have a tree? Why'd I have to have three trees?
Do you like the trees now?
Not today, I had to clean up after.
I'm not, I'm not sure. I'm happy to look into that further.
Okay.
I agree with Joe as well as it being mandatory in residential. You have people planting trees, you don't know if they're planting them over their sewer system or close to the sidewalk, the roots, the damage it can create. I mean, in the easements, popping them in the easements and the problems with them afterwards.
Well, that's.
No one should put anything in the easement without DPW is the other thing. I said, things shouldn't be in the easement without DPW approval.
But people do put them in. They put them in the utility easement as well. And then you have to go back and deal with the issue after the fact.
Well, that, that brings up a whole nother thing. If they're on the easement and the city's requirement, who prunes them? Who trims them? I know I do my own, but my neighbor says it's the city's requirement. And I called the city when one neighbor, the tree was hitting cars and trucks as we went by. So they came out and trimmed it. But, I mean, we should, should have that clarified someplace.
I don't recall if mine was required to be in the easement. I don't think, I don't think mine was required to be in the easement.
Yeah, ours were required. Also, um, how they determine if the height of the branches are high enough is they use a dump truck to go by because that way they know that a fire truck can get by without getting hit by one of the trees, you know, the given branch. I've seen that happen quite a few times.
I have a differing opinion. One of the things that I really like about Frazier is like the amount of trees that we have. And it's a little bit stark when you go into a community where there is no tree requirement and it's just flat, nothing. So I think that there is some merit to like maintaining the feel of our community with some tree requirement, or at least like the preservation of existing vegetation. If people are building a new home, they're going to like take like a parcel and just take out every tree. I don't necessarily agree with that, especially when you consider other things like drainage implications. Trees suck up a lot of water and do a lot to maintain the integrity of the land. So just a thought.
And you have a lot of vegetation going into the drainage because of when people don't maintain them as well. Plugging up the sewers and.
Right.
Issues with that.
Microphone is on.
I think it's Roseanne's, maybe.
It's on. I think. You're pretty far away.
Oh.
No, I agree. They, they do a lot for, not only they clean the air. I like trees.
Um, and, and in my prior experience with anything on eaves, like the city claims right of way there and otherwise it's your responsibility as a resident to maintain anything on the easement, including tree trimming, cutting your lawn, et cetera.
Dave?
Yeah, again, I'll, I'll look into the residential and requirements because, again, typically I, I don't see residential requirements as much. So I'll look into that and look to see if I can find in other communities who are doing that as well and see that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we also, you know, touch on screening. I know we, our screen, our ordinance on screening is, you know, generally, you know, wall or fence and buffer is kind of allows for a little more flexibility. But we've got screening for different, from different things, parking, parking lot screening, which you can either do a landscaped buffer or a wall. Same thing with residential, landscape or a wall. Dumpster, specifies dumpster screening, uh, screening, outdoor storage screening, and then also ground mounted fixture, which is going to be, you know, mechanical equipment, screening that as well. So I think this just allows for a little, it allows for some flexibility on the screening, but still allowing, or still requiring screening for certain uses that you might not.
Question, Lauren.
Yeah.
Um, looking at the pictures and the descriptions, the screen wall on the one page is showing six, six feet, where in the text it's showing three to four feet. And then in the next section, it's talking about six feet. And then the picture is showing three to four feet. I, I think they're just, they're switched.
Yeah.
So that might be more of a clarification, you know, when you go through the final review of this, you know, ordinance.
Yep, I think those got, I think the vegetated buffer got switched too. Thank you.
Yep.
And then we also have added a tree preservation section. And, you know, maybe to, uh, maybe to board member statistics point, maybe the tree replacement requirements, you know, specifies, because we have it for site plan. You know, it's, it's for any project requiring site plan approval. Special exception, should be special land use approval, subdivision plat or condominium approval. Maybe it's, you know, or new homes, single family homes, things like that. But it just kind of specifies that if you are removing trees that are of a certain size, that you have to replace it. And the replacement's at different rates depending on how large it is. But, so there's like 100% replacement for landmark trees and then protected trees, 50% replacement. So this is intended to, you know, hopefully minimize people, again, just clear cutting, like a wooded lot. Any thoughts?
The trees that are listed, are those the most common type that get planted or the preferred that we would like to see in the Frazier area?
I would say that these are like common, very common landscaping, street trees, yeah. There is, you know, that all trees kind of catch all if it doesn't encompass that. But, um, and I think the idea is that for, for certain trees, they, they reach maturity at different sizes and heights. So it's trying to cater that to those different species.
What about white birch?
Let's see, birch, 18 inches diameter, so a foot and a half diameter at about four and a half feet off the ground.
Too much global warming, birch won't grow very well here anymore.
You have to have a club.
It's more of a cold tree, though.
Well, if anyone has any other thoughts as, you know, as, after this meeting, feel free to reach out. Feel free to email. I appreciate everyone's discussion. As I, we'll have a steering committee meeting, um, next, next week and, you know, flesh out some more of these. And definitely we'll bring up some of these topics with the steering committee. So I appreciate it.
I did have one other question. And maybe it's more, uh, personal potential impact is if something is required that the city has to go through and repair, like a sewer line, what impact does that have relative to the vegetation that could be above that or 20 feet away from said sewer line that gets impacted? Is there anything that we would have covered here? Or would it just be that, nope, you know, said tree is in the way, it's going to be removed?
Well, so anything in this ordinance about protecting a certain type of tree would not over, would not, I guess, override or be more important than, you know, the public safety. So the public safety would have the presidents to kind of remove it if it's hindering public safety or, you know, DPW services. I don't know if that needs to be explicitly written. I think that is, it's just a limitation of the zoning ordinance is it's not higher than maintaining the city infrastructure.
Are you asking if the city destroys something, taking it out, are they responsible for repairing it?
Or replacing it.
Or replacing it in the same manner it was? I don't know that answer.
I mean, that's what they've been doing with the sewer repairs on Aaron Street. Anything that was torn up has been replaced exactly how it was. So if they had parking pads or grass, whatever, it's been replaced. So it was the same as before they tore it up.
Yeah, I don't think they'd be thrilled on replacing a landmark tree.
Well, they wouldn't replace it with a landmark tree, they would replace it.
This ordinance says 100% replacement.
Well, you'd have to replace it with a tree. You couldn't replace it with a landmark. You'd have to replace it with a smaller one, so it's not.
Well, and that's, that's where I'm, you know, trying to be a devil's advocate on how we've got this worded.
It would fall back to the installation, um, requirements that we have and the minimum planting size. So that's what they would have to plant. So, you know, obviously it's still not ideal to cut down those larger trees.
It's good. Thank you, Lauren. It was good, good discussion. I would like to see something, we deal a lot with signs, fences. You know, maybe we could have a discussion on signs and fences, on how the ordinance is going to change in that manner.
Yeah, we could talk about fences. So we did, I mean, we just adopted the sign ordinance fairly recently. Do you think it needs to be?
I was just looking at it. One of the things that bothers me is, uh, there's, there's one place that has a electronic sign. And at night, when nobody's around, the city's not around, they flash it, they change it, you know? And it's supposed to be held, you know, held in place, you know? Or I think it's 90 seconds is it?
I forgot what that number was, but there is a, the oscillating is supposed to be timed. It can't exceed a certain freak, a certain speed.
Yeah, yeah, I'd have to look into it.
Timed intervals, I believe.
Is that an issue with the ordinance though, or is that an issue with enforcement?
It's an issue with enforcement, but if it's not going to be enforced, why have it? You know?
You'll never be able to enforce it then.
So I guess what your question is, is you're asking about the enforcement of it, right? Like, how does that get controlled?
I mean, it's, it's the same thing as the gas canopy lighting, right? It's, we don't have a nighttime enforcement.
So they can't put a schedule on once a week where he works later?
That would be up to, I guess, the building manager and.
No, that would be up to the city manager.
Both of them, maybe, working together.
Okay. Just think about it.
Yeah, yeah, we can definitely bring back fences though, and next time we meet, next time someone wants to request a variance.
Yeah. Is there anything for next month?
Not for ZBA, as of right now.
All right. Any other questions on the ordinance update that you want, want to bring up at this point?
Appreciate it.
All righty, thank you very much, Lauren.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is unfinished business of this board, and there is none. Monthly report, Lauren.
Uh, I'm going to skip hockey land because I don't think there's any change from the last planning commission month where they're, we're waiting for the, uh, the, they're waiting for the documents to come back from the Macomb, from Macomb County registered deeds. Sheets will be at the July 21st planning commission meeting to obtain site plan approval. This is more of, you know, just making sure that they're following the, the plan they already submitted. So it's not, uh, in a sense, a full review where planning commission can make changes from their approved conditional rezoning plan. But since this was a stipulation in the conditional rezoning agreement, they do have to come to planning commission to get site plan approval. So it's going to look a little different, but they will be there.
I got a question. Are they, is there a reason why they paused that, the demolition?
They haven't signed the contract yet.
Oh.
It was what was at the city council meeting. And to my knowledge, the mayor actually put forward, because they said the city is kind of dragging their feet on getting things done here and it's taken us a while. And so the mayor said, when they, they were granted the, the change in the lighting, he said. he said, "Well, let's review the contract and have it back in two weeks, we'll sign it." They said, "Well, we can't do that." So it's four weeks, and I think it's...
We are, they do have, they have sent the signed contract, the conditional rezoning agreement, yes. So we do have that now, I think.
With the lawyers.
It's signed by the Sheets team, and the city is getting ready to sign their side of it.
Right.
Yep.
The lawyers are reviewing it.
But I believe they're in the end stages of that, so it should be executed very soon.
Okay. And that's, what we were told, that's why the guy stopped the demolition. Two reasons, demolition was costing more than he thought it was going to cost, and, uh, two, that the, the contract wasn't signed, so... That's all.
Okay.
They also didn't give out notice to any of the residents that lived directly behind it, that they were going to start demolition.
Oh, really?
No.
No?
None of those people got any notice?
I don't...
Are they supposed to be noticed?
They're not required to, I mean, it, it'd be a courtesy, but they're not required to.
That's what I thought.
Okay.
And then the only other item, I suppose, is the Masonic Boulevard, the new driveway, the one that was at zoning board, they got their Class A non-conforming use approved at Planning Commission last month. And Hayes Road, there's a proposed rezoning, Planning Commission recommended approval, so it'll go to council next week, uh, for a final approval or denial of that rezoning. So they're proposing to rezone, uh, this lot that just has a garage on it from RL to RM, so this is, uh, north of 14-mile road on Hayes, and there's a couple larger homes. Um, and they're requesting to rezone it in order to develop eight site condominiums on the, on the parcel instead of six, which would be allowed under their current zoning. So, again, that'll go to council next month, or next week. And I believe that's it for updates, thanks.
Okay. Action items are none, Planning Commission liaison, that's me. There is no Planning Commission meeting last night, so there's nothing to report there. Uh, we do have something coming up next month, right?
You've got, you've got Sheets, and you've got the text amendment for the lighting.
Okay, any, there is no, well, there's one public to be heard.
Nothing to be said, ladies.
Okay. I will, um, accept a motion to adjourn, then.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Is there a second?
I have a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.